I'm called order and local.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pendleallian.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Perry.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Birdy. Will you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first order of business this evening is comments by mayor. I do have a few, the first being, I'd like to please have everyone welcome our mayor for the day. This is Lizzie Gunton. She is an eighth grade student from Country Day School, and I just want to put the council members on notice here that before you think your egos are too big, just remember that any day, anytime, you can be replaced by an eighth grader. That includes me.
Did you say that was for a day or?
For a day.
Okay, just one.
But she's welcome back anytime, so please welcome Lizzie. And Lizzie's going to help us out this evening. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a resolution of sympathy for Patricia Waldeck. And I'd like to read this into the record, and I know there are family members here this evening, and I will present this as well, but this is a unfortunate, sad thing that I have to do, and I know that many, many individuals, families, friends here. We're very close to Waldeck's in the family. Pat was a great, a great woman, a great mother, grandmother, First Lady of Lake Forest, and we're all going to certainly miss her, and I'd like to read this into the record. Whereas on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its sadness at the profound loss of Patricia A. Waldeck on January 23rd, 2011, and whereas Patricia Ann Waldeck was a longtime and valued resident of Lake Forest, volunteering her time to serve the public schools, Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital, Gordon Community Center, Lake Forest Library, and the Church of St. Mary, to name only a few. And whereas Patricia Ann Waldeck was married to former mayor Frank J. Waldeck, was loving mother of eight, grandmother of 21, and great-grandmother of one, raised her family in Lake Forest, and whereas Patricia Ann Waldeck and her husband have continued to make tremendous gifts to the community throughout their support of the city and other local institutions, and whereas Patricia Ann Waldeck was a kind and gentle woman who deeply loved her community and fellow residents, her contributions to Lake Forest were significant, and she will truly be missed. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council that its deepest sympathy goes out to her husband Frank and her family. This is on the 6th of February 2012.
I move to adopt the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted, and I would like to present this to the, to the family. And I also would like to note that one of our, certainly our older woman, Kathy Waldeck is the daughter-in-law as well, so the family is well represented here. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a swearing in of a new firefighter, paramedic, Christopher Roberts. And Christopher, if you want to come on up, I'm going to actually do this. I guess it's the first time we're doing this, and I was thinking about it, it's another way we can maybe raise some money around here. Maybe wedding's next or?
If I could make a quick comment, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, it truly is a privilege and an honor to bring Christopher before you this evening. He completed his one-year probation, which basically requires an individual to achieve multiple certifications, understand basically the inner workings of the department, the policies, procedures, SOGs, and most importantly, to have an understanding of the city's mission and vision statement and respectively, the fire departments. The one thing I will say, when it comes to public service, this young man certainly understands what that means, and I think it's a testament to that when you see the folks, I'm going to ask them also to come up to stand behind him. We have Christopher's dad, I believe, is 33 years current active service with the Waukegan Fire Department as an officer. We also have Christopher's brother, currently serving in the Oswego Fire Department. And surprise, surprise, we have Christopher's wife, who is a firefighter at the Beach Park Fire Department. So I'd ask you guys all come on up.
All right, I'm going to read the oath for you, if you want to raise your right hand. I've never done this before, so if I miss a word, just make one up, would you? I, Christopher Roberts.
I, Christopher Roberts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the city of Lake Forest.
And the ordinance of the city of Lake Forest.
And the rules and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
And the rules and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of firefighter, paramedic.
Of the position of firefighter, paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
You did it.
There you go.
I think I would just add, if anybody's thinking of having a heart attack, now's a good time with all the in the audience.
This concludes my comments for this evening. The next item on the agenda is comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First, I think I, on behalf of the city staff, all want, also want to extend our condolences to the Waldeck family and Frank. Many of us knew Pat, we're going to miss him. First item on the wire report this evening is the Northwest Municipal Conference 2012 Legislative Program Resolution, included in your packet.
Sorry. Included in your packet is a resolution that supports the 2012 legislative program for the Northwest Municipal Conference. As I know the council's aware, the city has been a member of the Northwest Municipal Conference for a long period of time, and just in the last couple of years, and I think, again, going back to something we talked about earlier this evening, is that starting with the city's leadership on pension reform, some now probably seven years ago, we began this. Certainly the Northwest Municipal Conference has become a much, has become much more aggressive in their legislative program going forward. This year's program certainly focuses on maintaining the revenue stream. We've talked about this at previous city council meetings, making sure that the state doesn't rob local governments of the few revenue sources that we do have as it tries to struggle with balancing its budget, and also continuing to take a look at other cost implications based on whether they're pension, whether they're healthcare reform, PSEBA, and so forth. Also included in your packet was something from the Metropolitan Mayor's pockets. It adds a little more background to some of these legislative efforts. I think there was, some of you may have seen, the front page of the Chicago Tribune was interesting from the standpoint that they basically indicated that due to the fact that this is an election year with redistricting and every legislator up, that don't expect a lot of changes legislative this year, but I think that it's important for us to be out in front with, here's our program, and this is what we're looking for from a legislative or local government perspective. I will add that if the council approves this resolution this evening, that it will be forwarded to all of our respective state legislatures, and we actually have a meeting on Wednesday with State Representative Karen May about this, the cellphone, the hands-free cellphone ordinance, and a few other items as well. And so we will convey the sentiments of the city council to her when we meet with her on Wednesday. With that, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions the council may have.
Questions for Bob?
If not, there'd be a recommend, recommendation then to approve the resolution.
Motion to, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Fellow in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second item, as I mentioned, we are going to be meeting later on this week with Representative May. She, along with another state representative, have introduced legislation similar to what the city of Lake Forest was contemplating in our draft ordinance that you reviewed about a month ago. That would be a statewide ban, if you will, on cellphone usage except for hands-free. The recommendation from the staff was to have the city council defer any action on an ordinance, see where the statewide ban goes. We'll probably know within 90 days if that legislation makes it out of committee. If it makes it out of committee and makes its way to the full floor, hopefully it will get passed, and then the city's need to take action is effectively rendered moot. If the state refuses to take any action in the upcoming session, then we would bring back the ordinance for city council consideration. Be happy to answer any questions and direction, get direction from the city council.
I, I don't see any reason to wait. Well, I mean, the state of Illinois in particular, the most unreliable government around. If we pass our own ordinance, it'll, at worst, just be duplicative of what the state does. And I don't see any reason, if we believe it is a good ordinance, that we shouldn't, because we're far ahead of the state at this point, and who knows when they'll get around to acting.
Well, I think it's, on the other hand, I, I think it's wise to let the state take the lead on this. I think that there's a danger if individual municipalities each draft their own ordinance, I think it can create confusion. I mean, the ordinances can differ from municipality to municipality, and then in turn be slightly different from what the state passes, and we could have a situation where people are traveling from Highland Park through Highwood through Lake Forest to Lake Bluff, and there's one standard in Highland Park, there's another in Highwood, there's yet another in Lake Forest, and yet another in, in Lake Bluff. It's, it's confusing for local people, let alone, you know, those coming to our community. And I think, I really believe that this is something that the state needs to take the lead on. My only question, and it's a really minor one, is that I couldn't see any difference between the two bills. I put them side by side, and it, I just, I just didn't see the difference between them. I don't.
And I don't believe, Alderman, that there is much difference. They were introduced by two representatives, and my guess is, is that once it makes it to committee, they will be merged as one bill.
And I have a tendency to agree with Kathy. At this point, the state, unlike pension reform and some other programs, seems to be going in a positive direction, and if they continue the pace that they're taking, come early June, July, there will be a uniform ordinance passed for the state, and will be in sync with the rest of the state. But if the state does fall off pace, and say, for instance, in midsummer, there is no activity, then maybe as a city, we want to come back, maybe send a message to the state that we're in need of it, in need of some action. But they're going in the right direction. I think we should kind of fall in line with the state at this point.
I don't see any harm in our passing an ordinance. I, I think the, the idea that they're going to be radically different from one municipality to the other is overblown. I think we actually worked pretty hard to make sure that ours was like Highland Park's, for example. We can always, if and when the state gets around to acting, either repeal or amend our ordinances being duplicative. So, but meanwhile, we have something in effect, and if we thought it was important enough to go this far, I don't see any reason to delay. I mean, we look at this as a safety ordinance, so.
And I tend to agree with, with Bob. If it's really a safety issue for the welfare of our constituents, I, I don't think we should hesitate. I agree with every point you made. And what underscores it to me is, I can be driving down a street or up the highway, and you can tell who's on a cellphone. I mean, you, you can tell a car bobbing in the lane ahead of you. You, you can pretty much bet money, oh, they must be on the phone. They're distracted. Now, I know this council was very divided on the issue when we discussed it last time here. I personally have strong feelings in favor of it, but I'm, I've had hands-free in all my cars for a while, and I love it. I, I love the peace of mind that it gives me. And 70% of the respondents to the survey said they'd be in favor of ticketing, so that must tell you something about how the residents feel. I mean, notwithstanding that we were divided as a council, I think 70%, is that correct from the survey?
But didn't it say that 70% were in favor of ticketing if, if there was a law against it? So 30% are saying, don't even give them a ticket if there's a law against it. I mean, that's the way I saw it, but maybe I'm wrong. So to me, that actually cuts the other way, that there are 30% of the population saying, I don't care if it's against the law, don't give a ticket for it. I think that means people are, your residents are saying that they're not in favor of this, of passing this type of ordinance. When do 70%, when do 30% of the people say, don't write a ticket for somebody who, who violates an ordinance? That's a really high percentage.
30% is a minority compared to 70%.
I have a question for the staff. I mean, I, to Kathy's point, I think this is a bit of a problem now. I mean, you literally drive around Chicago, and you go across the boundaries of a particular community, and you don't know what the rules are. But I assume that if we were to dra, or pass this ordinance now, or hurry up and do it, that that would entail some administrative, a fair amount of administrative work in terms of educating the police department, and what policy was going to be in various kinds of circumstances and so forth. And if we're talking about a matter of 60 days or 90 days or something like that before we can see what's happening at the state level, that could entail, you know, who knows how this thing comes out of the meat grinder in Springfield. Maybe it is different, and all of a sudden, we've now burned a lot of city resources to, to get this all up and running, and now we have to change it all. I mean, this is not without cost and time and energy. I'm, and I just would, would, maybe I'm overplaying that point. But, you know, writing laws is one thing, enforcing them, making them functional, making them fair, you know, getting them to the point where they're equitably enforced, is not, it doesn't strike me as all that easy, especially a, a, a subject matter like this where it's just, I mean, inherently difficult to enforce in the first place. I, I'd just be interested in your comments, Bob, about the, sort of the implications for the police force relationships with the community and so forth, if this thing was going to change in 120 days.
Sure. And honestly, the answer is no directly, and I can only give you, with the current Illinois statutes about it being illegal to use a cellphone in a school zone, for example. We're not out there having sting operations, having officers watch people drive by to see if they're on their cellphone. But however, when schools started, we did have a, what I'll call more of a public education campaign where an officer was out there, and if he saw somebody on their cellphone, he would ask them, you know, are you aware of the ordinance, and, you know, do you want me to give you a warning, those kinds of things. But we were not out writing tickets and encouraging, or trying to discourage people from using their phone other than through public education. I think the other, if the council was to approve an ordinance here this evening, we would probably publicize it in the dialogue and give people a period of time to get hands-free systems for their car and, and go out and purchase those kinds of things, and really not look to doing any active enforcement. And this is an ordinance similar to what I'll call the seatbelt law, which is generally if there's another accident or another situation, that we'll write a ticket in addition to what, whatever it was, the accident ticket or speeding or whatever those other things might be.
Well, and back to the survey results for a moment, and I don't recall them perfectly, and I'm kind of talking off the top of my head, but I remember seeing something in there regarding a high percentage, maybe even 90% of the respondents to the survey saying that they think that the police, the main function of the police should be, I think, crime prevention. I think we run the risk of people in our community, and we have an excellent police force, we have a high degree of satisfaction with our police force, they do a great job, they do a great job of patrolling our community, especially the downtown area. They're wonderful. And I think we're running the risk of some backlash and some anger from people saying, why are you writing me a ticket for taking a call from my kid? I'm, you know, late to pick him up from school.
They can still take the calls, they just need a Bluetooth or something.
Pull off the road.
Wondering if they're, if it's going to create some bad feelings between our residents and the police force.
I hope so in our street, because we live on a, on a back rub to a school, to two schools. And these, in the morning, when these drivers to school are late, they're on two wheels with one hand on the cellphone.
We have no cellphone reception on your street.
So it would be, I'd be encouraged to see it. But again, I, I see your point.
I, I have a question. If we passed an ordinance tonight, and obviously you don't have a crystal ball, and, and they did pass one in 90 days or 120 days, would we be getting into, Alderman Pendleallian's point? Would we be doing a 2% adjustment, or a 90% adjustment, or a 50% adjustment to a potential state law? Because it might be good to get the, the, the period in time, you know, you get the 60 days to get your hands free done now, and get all these things done, and if the state doesn't act in 90 days, then we could either drop the hammer or enforce it, or, or, or something.
Well, I, I know.
Because they haven't done anything timely.
Right. The, I'm not a city attorney, but I'll act for one, and then Vic can correct me if I'm wrong. You cannot do anything that is less restrictive from, than the state law. You can do something that's more restrictive than the state law. So what you see in terms of the two bills that are before you, that would be the floor, if you will, and then if the city council wanted to go above that, that would be fine as well. But I think if, if they went in that direction, then ultimately, the state law would trump the city, city local ordinance.
I encourage learned counsel.
Isn't there a difference in terms of, of revenue too? I mean, if it's an ordinance, and there's a violation of the ordinance, doesn't the city get the, the revenue as opposed to a state law?
I'll defer to legal counsel on that one.
Yes, your, your point is well taken. If, if there is a parallel ordinance to a state law, and we tick it under the local ordinance, that's going to be treated initially as a, an ordinance violation. The fine would come to the city rather than to the county or the state. There is a sharing, depending on whether we take it up to Waukegan, or whether we can do it as a local adjudication.
No, this isn't like a tax law, or a zoning law, or a bulk-scale ordinance revision. We're talking safety. It is more like a seatbelt law, or a helmet law. And I don't care if we had to totally rewrite an ordinance because it's that far off from the state. The sooner you get the wheels in motion, and setting aside the administrative aspect of it, of enforcement and burdening our police department, let's say they didn't bother to write a single ticket. Just the fact that we have an ordinance in place that may save someone's life, then I say the sooner the better.
We, we had the ordinance teed up at the last meeting, and we tabled it, so we're obviously not going to agree on it, but let's, let's vote it up or down. I move to take it off the table, and I, I move to adopt the ordinance as proposed.
I would second that.
We don't actually have the ordinance in Congress's writing, which we do need to have.
No, but take it off the table.
But we could, we could have that pushed to the next agenda for a, an item, an item for consideration.
Yeah, I think, I think Vic, I was just going to recommend that. I think it's, it sounds to me like we still have a divided group on which way to go. We don't have a clear path, but as you stated, we could simply bring it up, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and take a vote and see where it goes.
What, what did we have on the last time we considered this, then?
There was.
We had two alternatives. One was a more distracted driving, and the other one was the hands-free.
We could have voted that ordinance in then, right?
We could have, then it was on the agenda for consideration. It's not on the agenda for consideration tonight.
Can't we take it off the table at any session?
Under the Open Meetings Act, if it's not on the agenda for consideration, we need to have it on the agenda for consideration. We can take it off the table to put it on the next agenda.
Very well.
We also had a pretty limited number of city council members present for the last meeting, if I recall.
That's right.
That's why it was tabled, so. Is it, is it a wish then, to have it come up on the next agenda, I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I think we should consider strongly another option, which was that we would wait for the state, as recommended here by the staff, and also maybe step up some enforcement. That's something that we talked about doing, and I thought was a very viable option in the interim. And rather than try and rush to something here, why don't we do some additional enforcement as part of this? It's only 120 days or so, and we could, we could move along. We have, we already have a state law in effect relative to some critical areas around the school zones, which I think is of critical importance. I agree with you, Mike. It's an issue of safety, and, and by self-admission, I don't think we've done a level of enforcement at those areas that we could, and maybe that would begin to bring some additional awareness to this topic, and I don't know why that's not a good parallel path to consider while we wait and see what the state does. Just a suggestion.
I guess it's an option.
But if we want to bring it up at the next council meeting, we could do that as well.
Or, as a council, and I agree with Tom, if we wait for the state, maybe we can set a deadline where if it's not considered by the state, then we'll bring it in front of the council in the first meeting in July, first meeting in June for a vote, to see if the state is progressing. We do have a hand-free ordinance already in the school zones, and we are very sensitive of the safety in those areas. But if we did increase enforcement, you know, again, I think it would be wise for uniformity to at least see if the state does follow through.
I agree.
Well, I think, again, if it's brought off the table and presented, we can vote either option, up or down. And if we vote it down, we can go with any other alternative. But I would like to see it brought up and voted on by the full council. That's, the reason we kicked it over is we didn't have a full council, and we knew that we weren't going to have unanimity. But I, I would like us to go on record and see what the council wants to do. We can't always agree on everything, but if, if a majority of us want to do it, I think it should be done.
But now we have new information, and the new information is that there are these bills pending before the state. So we can vote it up and down, but, but why not vote it up or down in 90 days? Once we know what direction the state is taking.
What if a 90 turns to 180?
We say we do it in 90 days, no matter what.
Go ahead, Bob.
Well, at the risk of trying to come up with a middle ground here, I'm hearing some interest to bring the item back for official consideration at the February 21st meeting. The other thing we can look at is put in there a effective date. And as I said, I'm meeting with Representative May later this week, and I will know from her as to what that date certain is, that it's either going or it's not going. And I can have that for the February 21st meeting. And so the council then could say, okay, if we want to give first reading, we could give first reading and hold second reading until that date, or we can give first reading and second reading, but not make the ordinance effective till that date. And then, as some, many of you have talked about, that gives staff opportunities over the next 60, 90 days to do more public education and awareness, and let people know that this is indeed coming, and you need to get prepared for this coming. And we can do some public education with the schools as well during that period of time to try and start to modify behaviors.
I, I think that's the best we can do right now. I'd suggest we proceed on that basis, and, you know, let's see what, what happens. We're not, nothing's definitive at this point, so. and, you know, let's see what happens, we're not, nothing's definitive at this point, so.
Right.
Is that fair enough?
It's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, we will then make sure it's on the February twenty-first agenda, and we'll, as soon as we know what the date is from Representative May, I'll get that out to all of you as well.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, anything else on your?
There was some question about how many city council members were likely to be here on the twenty-first, was that, is that satisfactory at this point?
Actually, I think now, the only one is Alderman Marsh, I believe, everybody else indicated that they will be here, so we'll put that on. The only other item I have is just, hopefully you had a chance to look at the report that came out from Public Works on our status of salt usage and snow plowing, it's obviously still trending very favorably for the city, knock on wood, hopefully we won't have too bad of a February and early March, so it's all positive news. And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
I have a couple. Number one, I'd like to point out that we started our wireless task force, and wireless communication task force, and we had our first meeting, and we've agreed to have other meetings and get the work done, it was a get-to-know-each-other sort of meeting. I think the one material thing that came out of it was that we feel we would have a resolution or a plan relatively in place at this point in time, in enough time where it wouldn't hold up the Bera project. I think that was the only thing that really came out of it, is we'll have something in place where by the time the permits and the dust settles, we should be in front of that project, hopefully not holding up Bera. But we don't know what that is yet, that's more of an objective. Second comment, I wrote a letter, I'd like to just read aloud, speaking as an alderman in the second ward, and not on behalf of the City of Lake Forest, I'd like to take a moment to make public my disappointment in my neighbor Carrie Friedman, and her unkind, relentless, and wasteful pursuit of stopping a building project on land adjacent to her own. In spite of the fact the process was followed completely and properly vetted, she has cost the new homeowner months of delays and tens of thousands of dollars in legal bills, not to mention neighborhood goodwill, countless hours of volunteer boards and commission members, this city council, the city staff, and legal expenses, all to amuse a selfish, not-in-my-backyard behavior. I feel strongly that these types of righteous, self-serving actions are not in character with Lake Forest, and damage all of us to some extent. So that's my comment.
Any other comments by council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, I want to commend Michael Thomas and the entire Public Works team, we've had a couple of, even though they haven't been the catastrophic February first snows, we've had a couple of very difficult snows, coming in rush hour, one I'm on a Friday afternoon, and I think you and your team, Michael, have done a tremendous job of keeping the streets and the sidewalks clear and safe, and I just want to commend you for, and all of your staff for terrific job, and we're proud of you, and we're glad you're here.
I would second that. I have to drive up here from Oakbrook to get home from work, so I go forty miles each way, basically. I can't wait to get beyond the city boundaries, or into the city of Lake Forest, I mean, because I know that when I get there, I'm going to be on a road that's in good condition, and it's usually the first road in good condition that I come across. So thank you again, thanks, Don, for bringing that up, it's a very good point.
And the snow plan that's been undertaken by Public Works, truly, it's been impressive, my involvement with Public Works, I've become more and more impressed with how organized it is. The one thing I was impressed about as I drove into Lake Forest during the snowstorm was our recycling bins that were sticking out of the snow, how many recycling bins are left, and when's the next phase?
While he is approaching the podium, I might add, just as a forewarn you, that I would agree with everything that's said, if there are not good roads in Lake Forest, it's because they're not under our jurisdiction. And we are researching the implications, cost and otherwise, if the city enters into an agreement with IDOT to take over Route sixty and Waukegan Road, because clearly, we're not even close to what we would expect in our community, but honestly, we're not going to be able to get them that good if we continue to be dependent upon IDOT. So I've asked Michael and his staff to just explore opportunities there, understand what the cost implications are, and we will be bringing that forward to you as a part of the FY20 budget.
One morning, a couple of weeks ago, as I was on my way to Oakbrook, I got to the intersection of Route forty-one and Route sixty, and there was a huge tie-up, and the tie-up was caused by an IDOT snowplow that had broken down, and there were three other snowplows parked behind it, and these guys were all walking all over the place, and it was mayhem. So to your point, it might be a good idea for us to take that over.
And, Mike, sorry to drag you up, I'm sure you had a day of rest.
With regards to the recycling carts, half of the city, again, we have sixty-five-hundred households within the city, single-family homes, over half of them, approximately thirty-six-hundred of them now have carts, so the second half will roll out sometime spring, early summer, possibly. We have applied for a grant through the State Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, the grant application was due December eighth, so we should hear, hopefully, in another month or so whether or not we will receive that grant.
Similar to the last grant?
Same exact grant, same exact grant, but we've budgeted a full amount in our capital plan, just in case if we are not successful in receiving the grant, we have money in the capital plan for the second and the final half of the rollout.
So Phase One has been successful, we're almost done.
Very successful, we looked at our data, we compared the months of October, November, December of two thousand and eleven compared to the same three months in two thousand and ten, our recycling increased by fifteen point nine percent, refugees only went down by two point, two point one, I think. So it'll be interesting to continue to look at that data, but the good thing, again, recycling numbers are going up, so, and again, that's just with half the town having the carts.
That's great. And I just had one question, and it's not Public Works, but there's a meeting at Gorton, I think tomorrow, and I just wondered if you had some information on that.
I do, but not with me. It's actually a focus group meeting that Gorton is inviting people to come and talk to them about what are the programs, services, that they are, that people want in a community center. So really, they're trying to be forward-thinking about what is it that Gorton can do to better meet the needs of the residents of the community. I apologize, I don't recall off the top of my head the time what it is, but we'll make sure it's on the city website, if it's not on the city website, we'll make sure it's on there as well, but if anybody's interested, they can contact Gorton Community Center and find out the exact time and location, I want to say it's early evening, but don't hold me to that.
Okay, but public's invited?
Six o'clock, I was just told, six o'clock at Gorton.
On what day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
I'll be brief. Spring's right around the corner, if not here already, and golf will be upon us before you know it. The golf advisory committee's been very busy, there's nine people appointed to that, plus Mary Van Ayersdale, Jeff Waite, Rick Walrith from Kemper Sports is our new general manager. Just intuitively, I feel it's going to be a great season at Deer Path this year, I know mailers went out to sign up for season passes, I urge residents to do that, consider lockers and junior memberships for your kids, and there's a great three-week, there's multiple three-week golf camps for the kids, it's very affordable, the instruction from Rich Franklin's outstanding, I just urge anybody who's got a child, get them going now, because my twelve-year-old is far better than I'll ever hope to be.
Don't give up.
Any other comments this evening?
No, our next item on the agenda this evening is?
Opportunity for the public to address the city council on non-agenda items.
Any public this evening, yes, you please come on up to the podium and state your name and address for the council and the viewing public?
Hi, I'm Lucy George Cooper, I'm from Lake Forest College, so my address is five-five-five North Sheridan Road, I actually live in Deer Path Hall, so just down the street. I'm here, I just wanted to introduce myself, I have been appointed as city liaison for the college student council, I'm very excited to start working with the members of the city council, as well as the mayor, and members of the Office of Economic Development, to kind of start to make the connection stronger between the school and the town, so I'm working, like I said, in coordination with the Office of Economic Development, to hopefully start up some programs that will bring the school and the town closer together, we're looking to do two to three programs per semester, so just wanted to introduce myself and say how excited I am to be here, and I'm always open for questions, suggestions, for anything that the students might enjoy that you can all help with, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming tonight, and I look forward to working with you. Any other, yes, Bob?
Here he comes.
I'm glad you said it, I didn't- I just think, I'm sitting back there listening about this phone thing, that I think a simple situation would be to get to the automobile manufacturers, to put something in that you can't use the phone in the car while it's running, they've got, you're not, you're not telling them, don't use the phone, stop the car and get out to use it. I think all the communities should get together and put in a request to the states, to all the states, to say that. I think it would be simple. Put a little key in the car, that's all.
Thank you for your comment, any other comments by the public this evening? No, hearing none other, we will move on to the consent agenda, we have two items on the agenda this evening, the first being the check register for period December twenty-one, twenty-eleven, to January thirtieth, twenty-twelve, and the second being the approval of the January seventeenth, twenty-twelve city council meeting minutes. Any questions, comments? If not, entertain, I think the second needs a roll call vote, so if we can, can we put them both together in a roll call vote? Or do I have to do them both separately?
One motion, it'll be a roll call vote.
Okay, very good.
Motion to approve consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Waldex.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Penaliyan.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Eight yes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda is ordinances, and our mayor's going to read the first ordinance here, our new mayor for the day, so, Lizzie, if you go ahead and-
Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Special Use Permit for Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart to Allow Expansion of the Campus Boundaries to Incorporate the Twenty-Third Acre Bera Parcel into the Woodlands Academy Campus.
First read.
Presented by Catherine Cerniac, Director of Community Development, and Victor Philippini, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor for the Day, Mayor Cowley, and members of the council. This is another step in the council's consideration of the Woodlands Academy opportunity. I want to spend a little bit of time, just for the benefit of those who may not be familiar with what really has become a lengthy and deliberative process to consider this request, I'd like to review the short timeline briefly, I would like to present the request that is before you, on the recommendation from the Plan Commission, and then I will turn it over to City Attorney Victor Philippini to actually review the ordinance and talk more in detail. Just very briefly, in September of this year, Woodlands Academy held a community meeting. At that meeting, they made an announcement that donors had stepped forward, making an offer to acquire the Twenty-Three Acre Bera Parcel, and after cleaning it up, demolishing Old Main, gifting that property essentially as a cleaned-up blank canvas to Woodlands Academy for use as part of their campus, and for use consistent with their educational mission. On October third of this year, this matter was brought before the city council, really at the very start of the process, in fact, the council considered the fundamental question of whether or not the community should even consider the request to approve the demolition of Old Main, whether the donors should be told at the very outset that the community wasn't interested in this proposal. The council did not take that direction, instead, they, the council, you outlined a process under which Woodlands, the donor, and at that time, the property owner, the bank, could bring this matter forward for public consideration. Following that, later in October, the Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing and considered a request that was authorized by the then-property owner, and filed by Woodlands Academy, a request for de-designation of the portion of Bera property that was in, that is today still in the local historic district. The Historic Preservation Commission, after hearing public testimony and deliberating on that question, felt that from their perspective, as protectors of the historic resources in the community, that they could not recommend to the city council that that action be taken. They did at the same time recognize that the city council was charged with considering a broader range of factors in considering that request. In early November, the city council did hear that recommendation from the Plan Commission. At that meeting, staff asked for direction on whether the council wanted to uphold that recommendation, or whether you wanted us to work with the city attorney, craft an ordinance for de-designation, and bring that forward. Based on your direction, early in November, we did come forward to the council at the November twenty-first meeting, and at that meeting, the city council did approve the de-designation ordinance, subject to numerous conditions, and that really was one step, a first step in this process, that de-designation has not yet occurred, because the various pieces have not yet come together. As one of the conditions of that de-designation ordinance, Woodlands Academy did come forward then in middle December with a request for an amendment to their special use permit. At that meeting, the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the amendment to the special use permit to allow the campus to be expanded, and between December fourteenth and today, there have been numerous discussions, numerous meetings between the city attorney and representatives of both the donors and Woodlands, to really address questions that have been raised about uncertainties, questions about timelines, and questions about how the property would be used in the future, and how to really create an ordinance that not only gave permission to Woodlands Academy to use the Twenty-Three Acre Parcel for educational uses, but also, unlike other special use permits, actually established some requirements that they use the property in a certain manner. The request before you tonight, as I mentioned, did come before the Plan Commission, it is a request to amend the existing special use permit for Woodlands Academy. Woodlands Academy opened in Old Main in nineteen oh one, in nineteen sixty-one, Woodlands Academy moved out of the Old Main building, across the ravine, into the school as it exists today. In nineteen ninety-eight, Woodlands Academy came forward, and at that time, a special use permit was issued, which allowed them to expand on their campus. When Woodlands Academy originally moved across the ravine in nineteen sixty-one, and when it moved onto the Bera campus originally in nineteen oh one, there was no requirement in place for a special use permit. So a special use permit was established for Woodlands Academy in nineteen ninety-eight, that special use permit was amended in two thousand and eight, when Woodlands did some further expansion, and the request before the Plan Commission was to amend that special use permit, again, this time to expand the boundaries of Woodlands Academy, to incorporate the Twenty-Three Acre Bera Property into Woodlands Campus, and I'll show you a map of that in a moment. As part of this special use permit, importantly, this amendment only allows the expansion, it does not approve any redevelopment, any new buildings for Bera campus. The special use permit that is in front of you requires that a master plan come forward at a later date, before any redevelopment of that property occurs. What is before you tonight is a recommendation from the Plan Commission for approval of the ordinance, it was a split vote in the Plan Commission, I believe the vote was five to two, although the two- to two. Although, the two dissenting Plan Commissioners stated strong support for the Woodlands Academy use of the property. Their concern related to the uncertainties that existed with the proposal. And in an effort to respond to those concerns, as well as to some questions raised by the council earlier in your discussions, that's why there's been this lag time between bringing this ordinance forward, to really make sure that what's presented to you, beginning on page 33 of your packet, is a very strong ordinance. I don't know if I mentioned it, but only first reading is requested of you tonight. The existing Woodlands Campus is located in this area. Outlined in red is the Twenty-Three Acre Parcel that would be combined. The entire Woodlands Parcel would essentially be reconstituted to very close to its original configuration as it existed in 1901. And the final piece of this is going to be a review of the ordinance. We've identified key provisions of the ordinance, and City Attorney Victor Philippini is going to walk you through those. Again, your ordinance begins on page 33 of your packets.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The ordinance is, as Kathy mentioned, a little bit different than most other special use ordinances. Most special use ordinances extend a right of a property owner to use property in a certain way. This one actually includes an obligation that the property be used in a certain way. Obviously, the major distinction here is that because of the conditional de-designation ordinance and the prospective demolition of Old Main, the City Council had expressed, and the ordinance intends to embody that expression, to make sure that there is going to be an educational use on that property, as that had been the objective after DePaul closed the campus for college purposes. And it's with that in mind that the ordinance is crafted in the way it is. There are several provisions of some note. And I'll walk through them in the way that they're set out in the ordinance. As Kathy noted, there will have to be a master plan. Without that master plan approval, no redevelopment activity, except for some minor interim activities, will be occurring on the Barrett Property. The aspects of the master plan, you'll see in Section 2A3 of the ordinance. It's on pages 34 and 35 of your packet. It includes elements for protection and maintenance of the cemetery and the ravines, reconfiguration of the entranceway, so that the current entrance to Woodlands will be shifted over, affecting a better safety configuration, and that there will be an internal circulation plan that will be developed. The plan itself will also include, or at least there's the encouragement that they include elements for community benefit, as well as preservation of some of the natural resources in the area. The interim steps that will be allowed will essentially be use of the existing library, uses of open space for athletic purposes, but only in those instances if they're not going to have any long-term impact, or any impact on the ravines, or any functional impact on the library, and then the demolition itself. The demolition terms are set out in Section 2B of the ordinance. There are a number of preconditions before demolition permit would be authorized. One is the recordation of this ordinance. The reason for that is that the ordinance itself has use limitations, and the recordation will have the effect of binding the property to those use limitations. There is a letter of mutual understanding, which is attached as an Exhibit D to the ordinance, and that's to reconfirm what has been represented, namely that the donor is intending to convey the property to Woodlands following the demolition and restoration of the area. In order to maintain an historical record of Old Main, there's a requirement that an historic building survey be completed. That's something that will be under the supervision and ultimately the approval of the Director of Community Development. There would also be, in order to ensure appropriate reuse and salvaging of any of the building elements of Old Main, a plan for donation or sale that would have to be presented and approved by the Community Development Director. One of the obvious concerns has been throughout the preservation of some of the more sensitive areas, including the front lawn, the ravines, the cemetery. Appropriate plans will have to be presented and approved for those prior to the demolition of Old Main. There would also need to be some addressing of the, and Alderman Moore had mentioned this in his comments to the council, the addressing of the wireless facilities that are currently atop Old Main. We'd need to have some program in place to make sure that there's not going to be interruption of cell services in that portion of the city. A plan and schedule, as well as a financing, I'm sorry, financial security for the actual demolition would have to occur as well. We want to make sure, A, that we know what's going to happen, how it's going to happen, when it's going to happen, and that there's going to be money to make sure it gets done. Those had been concerns that the council had raised, and they are addressed in the ordinance. As far as the use of the property, in addition to the interim uses that I mentioned, Section 2C sets out that it will be used for educational purposes. And only if all educational purposes on both the Woodlands and the Barrett Property were to cease, would that restriction itself terminate. Otherwise, it would have to come back to the City Council before any change would be allowed. The ordinance, instead of just being a mere grant of authority, it's also going to be an obligation on the part of the owners. We have some general conditions, that it will have to comply with all applicable laws. You'll notice in Section 2C2, 2D2, I'm sorry, starting to sound like Star Wars here. Section 2D2, there's a requirement for a transfer assumption agreement. This is really a protection to make sure that, in today's real estate world, with the common transfers to LLCs and other types of entities that may be single purpose, we want to make sure if ever any such thing occurred, for any variety of reasons, that there's still going to be a financially viable entity that's going to be responsible to the various protections that are incorporated and required under this ordinance, particularly the preservation and conservation plans that are to be forthcoming. So, the reason for that provision is that there's a number of conditions on that, as well as some limitations, to make sure that this won't be an overly oppressive provision, but also to make sure that we have a well-established program to maintain these elements of the campus plan. And then we have enforcement provisions that appear as well. The last provision of major concern is in the effective date provision, namely, we're going to have to have a sign-off that they agree to the terms, and that it will be recorded before it becomes effective. Again, that's going to be making sure that all of the conditions in the ordinance become binding on the property itself. We do intend to enforce this as we would any other zoning ordinance. So if there's a violation of these terms, there's the opportunity for the city to ensure that that's going to happen. You'll notice in Section 2D3, we do give them a notice and cure provision before any court action would be undertaken, although fines could be in at the time of the notification. I think that is, for large measure, the terms. You'll notice that there's some provisions that may not be fully spelled out. Those provisions would include the provisions for the amount of the bonds. The reason for that is that we don't have those plans yet. And until we know what it's going to cost, we're not going to set that. We did not want to have the city under-guessing, if you will. The provisions of the ordinance say they have to be to the satisfaction of the city. So we're going to be able to evaluate what the cost of the demolition is going to be and the restoration. And at that point, we can set the bar for what that bond is going to be. Likewise, if ever there's a transfer, the determination of whether the transfer entity is financially viable will be dependent on what we understand the cost to be for maintaining the various programs that will be required underneath the terms of the ordinance and the campus plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a quick one on the very nature of the Woodlands Academy. Are we entering into an agreement with a national affiliation or a local company? And I only ask that question because the motivation of a national organization is part of, with all due respect, as to one of its subsidiaries, would be, they may act differently as a local, completely local company would. And I just didn't know, is this a Lake Forest entity or part of a national group?
I don't know the exact structure of Woodlands Academy with respect to the broader organization of the Order of the Sacred Heart. But in terms of this ordinance, the ordinance is really a control of the property itself. And whether it is Woodlands, or, I know that there was some contention if ever this got in the hands of the Dominicans. But whatever the educational institution is, it's still going to be subject to the same terms of these ordinances. And particularly, the educational use is what's critical here in terms of how it's going to be used. I hope that that's responsive to your question.
Kind of, I guess. And then, I know, I asked you, Kathy, there was a question on definition. And the fact that we're going wireless now is like, I can't remember what the question I had.
I believe Kathy did convey that to me. The question, I believe, was along the lines of, do we need to have a specific definition of what is the educational mission? We certainly can do that. I guess, one thing that, if my short time here has told me, is that education itself has been an evolving mission over decades and centuries. And I don't know that we want to be overly confining as respect to that. On the other hand, I think that we have some fairly clear case law that indicates what would be within the realm of educational mission. I think that the more important thing, however, is that the updated master plan is really going to be what I'll call the defining terms of this ordinance. Again, this is, you know, sort of fallen in the lap of Woodlands, I understand it. They haven't been able to really get their arms around it. But before they can do anything, they're going to have to come forward with that master plan. And that master plan is intended to give much more definition to this ordinance. And it will also be coming back to the council before it becomes official. So, we could try to do that. I don't know if we're in the best position to do that today. I think we'll have a better sense of it when we actually see the master plan as it's developed.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, and maybe Kathy can help me here. Wireless, I'm just a little, please help me with the background. I mean, just a little confused why it would end up in this document. Since when are we getting into wireless business? And dictating what a piece of property ought to be used for in terms of wireless?
There are rooftop antennas on Old Main currently. And there are leases that are involved with those antennas. And those antennas provide critical service to the southeast portion of the community. If we were to issue a demolition permit without any regard for that, number one, I'll let the city attorney respond to whether we could even do that. But we do have a responsibility to ensure that there is coverage provided for our residents. And with the wireless task force, that is an issue...
Can I ask that? I mean, I guess that's the question I'm asking, is what is our responsibility to provide wireless service to residents? I mean, if we're going to get revenue, I'd be delighted to be thinking about that, but...
The legal answer is, is that we don't have any responsibility at all. They're not our leases. They're, I'm not quite sure who, whoever the owner of the property is.
Whoever they are, we don't care.
Right. It's their lease. And they may have some issues and/or risks in terms of their lease obligations with the wireless company. I think that the reason why it's in this ordinance, and why it's a concern of the city, is as Kathy said, that has really turned into a hub of sorts for wireless service in that area of town. The obvious and growing dependence of our community on wireless facilities at least gives us the reason, as we are, we have a hand in the transition of this building from being the support structure for those wireless facilities, that we wanted to take a proactive role and not have something simply happen and be left in a surprise situation, not knowing what the impact is going to be on the wireless service within the area.
Are we going to then share in the revenue because of our foresight?
I don't know that we are...
For lack of a better question.
I don't know that we are in any clear position as to what's going to be the alternative sites. Clearly, you know, there are sites that are nearby that the city owns. And whether the city gets involved in that is a decision ultimately for the council.
I wasn't staking out a position. I was simply trying to become informed. The other question that I have is, and it's really a question of, since I have not been party in any negotiations or informed thereof, has there been any discussion of affordable housing? There is discussion in this document about all kinds of city services. There's discussion of preservation. There's discussion of all kinds of things. And affordable housing was a key component of the prior approval. It was over 16 units. And affordable housing is a topic that we talk about with large tracts of property and institutions such as Woodlands. We were talking about it with the college. We were talking about it with the hospital. And it looks like there's a number of ways that that could be incorporated into this document. Just wondering if that has been a topic of discussion.
It has not been a topic of discussion, but the concept of possible faculty housing on this property is certainly something that's within the realm. Details of that level would really be part of the master plan discussion.
Okay. I would, you know, it looks like there's a lot of extra language in here that talks about would've, could'ves, and maybes, and should'ves. And I'd love to see something with respect to affordable housing, or something thereof in this document. And I don't see it in here.
Kathy, I have a question. In the letter of mutual understanding, there's a sentence that says, "The donor shall donate and convey the Barrett Campus to Woodlands within 12 months from the date of demolition completion." By demolition completion, do you mean the building is demolished and the site is cleaned up?
Yes.
Is that what's meant by completion? So, I'm just curious, why 12 months, why the 12-month time span between the date that everything's completed and the date that the property needs to be?
In our discussion, we understand that the donors want to be sure that Woodlands is prepared to accept the property, that the property really is completely cleaned up, restored, to not put any burdens on Woodlands. So, it really is to make sure that Woodlands is receiving a gift that they can manage, and that they're prepared, and that they've done their planning to take over. That doesn't mean they couldn't transfer that property sooner after demolition, but that was where the 12-month came from.
But it's, but just so I'm clear, though, the 12 months is after, not after demolition, but after completion of demolition, which is more than just knocking down the building, right? Am I...
I believe the way that's written is it means after we close the demolition permit. And we would close the demolition permit once the building's down and the site is restored, consistent with the original approvals.
Kathy, just, I know how much, how long you and Vic and the Woodlands representatives have worked on this. It's obvious that, in the Vic terms, it's belts and suspenders. There's no question about it. Got a lot covered. To Kathy's point, one of the questions I've raised with you in the past has been, not so much, when will it be conveyed after the demolition, is, when will the master planning process start? And what's the anticipated timing for the demolition? I think if we've made the decision that we have that Old Main comes down, and part of that is the condition of the property and the continued deterioration of that property, the safety risks and everything associated with that, I guess I want to see on the front side, what's the process? When do we anticipate seeing a master plan? And when do we anticipate some progress being made to getting to that point?
We don't have a specific timeframe on that. We do know that before the building can come down, there's a number of things as outlined in the ordinance that need to occur, asbestos evaluation, abatement, the whole issue of the wireless antennas, whether the city wanted to proceed without that being resolved or not. I don't believe that the donors would be able to. It may be possible that between now and second reading, that we could at least talk about whether there's a way that we could put a bit of a timeframe around that. whether there's a way that we could put a bit of a timeframe around that. It is my understanding that the donors are not interested in prolonging this. They would like to move forward with the demolition, but they also, there are some uncertainties as to how quickly they can get everything in line to proceed. But maybe we can at least have that discussion, and if we can, put in a timeframe, we'll do that, and if not, we'll let you know why not.
And I don't know if it necessarily has to be in the ordinance, Kathy, but I think it would be interesting just to, to know.
I have a couple of questions, partly just to draw out into the public record some of the details here. And I'm just going to kind of go through quickly, hopefully. First of all, the, this, this recording of the SUP, and this is really a question for Vic, what impact does that have on the title of, you know, on the property? Does this become a deed restriction or something to that effect?
It is absolutely a deed restriction. In, unlike a ordinary covenant where you may have some third party who's going to be doing it, the difference here is that a change would be presented to the city council. The importance of it, I think, is twofold. One is that there's not going to be a transfer that won't be made aware of what the restrictions are, and two is that the city will always be part of that decision-making, except in the event that all educational uses were to terminate on most properties.
And if that should happen, or there was a material violation, or there's an abandonment of the property, or something unexpected happened?
Yeah. If all the educational uses...
What happens next?
If all the educational use is terminated, this would still be Zoned R4, which is sixty thousand square foot, single-family residential.
So, you'd have roughly how many residential lots on a conforming basis?
On the twenty-three acre parcel, fifteen, give or take, and any request for subdivision will, would need to go through the city process. We would look at the same preservation of open space, a conservation easement will likely already be in place, ravine setbacks, all of those elements would still come into play. There would be no specific right to fifteen units, we would go through the normal process.
And if I might add, Kathy did just mention it, the expectation is that there will be a conservation easement over part of the property. That's something that is of a more permanent nature than the ordinance would be. It wouldn't be something that would likely just come to the council as part of a review process for an amendment, but rather, that's going to be something expected to be a more permanent aspect of the property, and not something that will change even with the use.
So, back to Alderman, Schoenheider's, Belt and Suspender's comment, the downside scenario, if everything were to go wrong and there was ill intent, or any other kind of bad thing that happened, to use a technical term, this property would revert to a state of having, at its worst, something like fifteen or sixteen, probably two million dollar single-family homes on it. Is that a fair comment?
That's correct. The technical legal term, I believe, is uh-oh.
Yeah. So, you've got, you've got the recordation of the SUP, sort of creating a cloud on the title. You have the city's right to engage itself in any assumption of this property or this agreement by a successor, whether it's Woodlands or some other successor that's attempted along the way. If Woodlands should cease to exist in the next two years while this process is going forward. So, the successors are essentially bound by this as well, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
So, any successor owner would be bound by the same set of rules?
But they could apply for a variance, the same way anyone else could, right?
Right. And then, then the...
It doesn't completely preclude, but...
Well, but, right.
Again, and there are a couple of provisions that you'll see also with the transfer assumption agreement, that keeps the city engaged in any process that would change elements of the use of this property.
And then, I guess lastly, my quest, one of my questions has been this concern about, for lack of a better way to explain it, the budget associated with the demolition of the building, which is, you know, unfortunately, I've been involved in some of these kinds of demolitions of older structures, and you get in there and find out that there are things you didn't anticipate. There's a salvage requirement in the document that basically says that certain elements of the architecture need to be preserved or salvaged and put to some other use. So, the budget will be the budget, but the reality could be something very different. Could you quickly go over what the, what the current city ordinances provide for bonding? You know, is there some limit to what kind of a bond the city can require, such that if the demolition, if the owner ran out of money and the city had to step in and finish the job, that it would be, we'd be protected?
And this is actually something beyond our, our actual ordinances. We will have, the form of it is what we require, we will require under our ordinances, but in terms of the actual security, we're going to await actually a contract for the demolition. That will be the basis on which we measure the amount of the security. We do that, I believe Kathy, a hundred and ten percent or twenty-five?
Hundred and ten percent.
Hundred and ten percent of that. So, there is a cushion, and we would expect that the contract itself will likely have some contingency. So, I, I think we'll feel pretty comfortable about that. Until we have it in hand and have reviewed it to ensure that it covers everything, we're, we don't anticipate that it will be approved.
Would there be a provision that if there was a substantial change order in the contract, that the city could require additional bonding?
We would certainly provide for that as part of the, the overall security for that.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kathy?
I'll move to Grantford's reading.
Second. Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries.
Do you want to read my one? Do you want to read mine?
Okay. I'm trying to, trying to make sure our mayor for the day is awake yet. I know we're, we're all struggling up here, so we're going to go on to another one.
Wait on the next item.
This, this will do it to you. Can you want to read that one? Go ahead. Our next item on the agenda this evening is...
Consideration of recommendation from the Building Review Board and the Legal Committee in support of an ordinance amending Chapter Nine, Architectural and Site Design Review of the City Code.
Do you want to read first reading and...
First reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Presented by Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community Development, and Victor Philippini, City Attorney.
Madam and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, Ms. Zerniak just pointed at me, I think that meant I'm handling this. This ordinance is presented to you on the recommendation of both the Legal Committee and the Building Review Board. There have been some legal court decisions in Illinois that have suggested that the standards for these types of design review are best done in what's really a legislative as opposed to an adjudicative manner. And in order to do that, we are recommending that the, that the point of final determination be moved from the Building Review Board to the city council. The Building Review Board will make a recommendation, the city council will make the final decision. It's a nuanced difference from what we do right now, where the Building Review Board makes the final decision, subject to appeal to the city council, but now you'll be passing an ordinance, making that final determination. So, the character of it is actually legislative as opposed to quasi-judicial. I don't want to get overly technical about this from a legal perspective, but it is to better conform our ordinances with some of the judicial decisions, and to better protect our ordinances from challenge as a result. Again, this was recommended, recommended both by the Legal Committee and by the Building Review Board. If it's appropriate, the council can both give first reading and final approval tonight. Any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Just to state, state the obvious, zoning board, at least my belief is right now, if they pass something, it has to come before council. Are we just keeping the other boards in line with what would currently zoning?
Thank you for saying that, because I meant to actually make that point, but my, my brain was not altogether functioning. Yes, what will happen, and this goes to the next item on the agenda, too, with respect to the Building Review Board, it will now function largely the same as the zoning board of appeals. The HPC, when it's exercising the, the building scale exception authority, which is under the Building Review Board ordinance, but we have a, a trade provision, if you will, it too will be acting in the same fashion. However, and this is leading into the next item, the HPC will continue to be the final determining body for certificates of appropriateness that may come before it. The council will retain its appeal process as opposed to becoming the final determining party. The reason for that is that the court decisions regarding historic preservation have, have not required the same kind of transition as, as I talked about with respect to the Building Review Board.
Thanks.
Vic, just, just to clarify, so anything, not just building scale ordinance, but site design and review, anything the Building Review Board does approve would then come to council for final approval?
Correct. They will make their recommendation, they will prepare a report, and based on that report, an ordinance will be drafted, that ordinance will then be for consideration by the council.
No matter what? No matter what it is?
Correct. And again, it's, it is different from what we do now, because now it only comes to the council if someone files an actual appeal. So, you'll see these with greater frequency, and, and one of the things that we've, we've talked about is that, you know, because these ordinances and the packet materials will, we would hope in most instances, give a full explanation of what's presented, it could be included within the consent agenda unless there's a split vote or an issue of particular concern.
That was my next question. Yeah, thank you.
Good idea.
And we would also, again, our, our suggestion would also be that matters before the zoning board, which have been traditionally brought before you in a full presentation, would also be handled in that fashion as well. They would be put on the consent agenda, absent a split vote or a material controversy before the zoning board appeals. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to waive first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novick?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Needelman?
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie, and our next item on the agenda this evening is number three, and...
Consideration of recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission and the Legal Committee in support of the ordinance amending Chapter Fifty-One, Historic Preservation of the City Code. First reading, and if decided by the city council, final approval. Presented by Catherine Zerniak, Director of Community and Development, and Victor Philippini, City Attorney.
I think she's got this down.
She's ready to take over.
I, I believe that Ms. Zerniak has again waived her, her right to speak and handed it over to me, so, madam and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, as I mentioned, this is a, a more limited change than what we have before the Building Review Board. There's actually two changes. The one that I mentioned with respect to the building scale aspects of it, what we're doing in those instances where a building scale is being sought, and it's an historic building, the building, I'm sorry, the Historic Preservation Commission has exercised that authority, which had been traditionally done by the Building Review Board. So, in like fashion, when the Historic Preservation Commission is undertaking a building scale exception review, it will be acting only in a recommendation role and making that recommendation to the council for final action. The other change, which is a discreet change, but it's one to make clear that when we issue a certificate of appropriateness, it is affecting certain outcomes. The reason for this is that the statute in Illinois calls for administrative review of decisions of an Historic Preservation Commission if they are either directing or causing someone to refrain from doing certain types of action. We had a recent review of this on a matter that's before the courts, and the court was unclear whether our certificate of appropriateness had that effect, and rather than make that a question of debate, we thought we would make that a matter of express statement in the ordinance, and that's why that change is in there. It literally parrots what the statute says, but we've put it in our ordinance, so there's no uncertainty if it goes before court again. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
And I recognize the fact that it's not one of the changes being made in the ordinance, but it is something that I, I'd just like to bring up maybe for the next time or this time, if you think so. Under the certificate of economic hardship, while I understand this, the definition of, you know, denied all reasonable use in return is one that's almost never met, I, I worry about this being a, kind of a backdoor weakening of the, of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. And I did read somewhere, and I guess this is a bit of a challenge, and I can't find it, and I've looked for it many times, that economic hardship is actually defined by the Secretary of the Interior as it relates to historic preservation only. And this should be the definition in here, and I don't know if it is or not, and I'm not an attorney, I didn't order to look. But the economic hardship provision with, related, as it relates to historic preservation had only to do with a person who owns property, and during that ownership, before transference, it is encumbered by a, by another ordinance or an addition to an ordinance. And, and there would be no economic hardship if you bought the property fully encumbered, and there were no additional encumbrances put on by a municipality. It would actually negate the opportunity to go for economic hardship if you bought it fully encumbered, knowing what you got, so to speak. And I didn't know when there would be a good time or a bad time, I don't want to slow things down, it's nine o'clock, but, but I know I've read that, and I, for the life of me, I couldn't find it again.
Well, let, let me address two elements of that. One is the economic hardship standard itself. That standard largely parrots federal and state law on takings, and only if it's a hardship to the extent that someone has no viable use of their property is that an excuse to override our ordinance. So, it's a very high bar, it's intended to be a very high bar. Sort of a flip side of all of this is an issue that, that Kathy has, I think, discussed at different times before the council, but concerns about making sure, and we've talked about this in the context of distressed buildings and, and the like, making sure that we don't have someone by neglect get to a point that a, a building is now no longer viable. And there actually are some efforts underway right now to try to develop some standards for that, and those will be a, a separate review going both to the Building Review Board for the non-landmarked buildings, and to the Historic Preservation Commission for landmark buildings, and they will have a recommendation coming back to the council on that aspect of, of demolition, if you will.
But none of that's for tonight?
None, none of that's for tonight. That's, the, the second part in particular is still being developed.
You okay?
I'll send you, thanks.
I'll repeat my motion to waive first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You know, I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novick?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Panelyan?
Aye.
Alderman Morse?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenheider?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Needelman?
Aye.
Ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie. That concludes our main agenda items. I just want to say thank you to our mayor for the day, Lizzie Gunton, and thanks for sticking with it all night here. I think you're welcome to fill in for us anytime you like, so, you know, next time we have an absence, we got your number, we're going to call you up, and you're free to fill in, but thanks for being here tonight, that was very nice of you to do. in, but thanks for being here tonight, that was very nice of you to do that. Any other items for discussion this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor? The meeting is adjourned, go ahead. Thank you. Nice job.